My not being inside of the position.
You model up fun. We have one. You just have to have fun. It's not ridiculous. I don't want to present this game. Yes. Let's see.
Joe, how you feeling?
Just a minute seconds up here.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. Meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. And this evening, we have Amy Free, myself, Russ Edwards, Joe Marco, and our administrative assistant, Melissa. So full house. And the first thing is sign the minutes that were approved.
This is the one I was absent. You two have signed.
Okay, so we so you give that to Melissa now.
Aye.
And then we have minutes from December thirteenth, twenty seven, and the third to review. And you should have cottons right there. Or did we only make one? Okay. Yeah, with the different things, bugs going around and stuff, looks like it's been one versus another being out at a time.
Yep. Okay, that's another one of those.
Okay, I'm looking at December thirteenth. Takes a minute to think back that long ago.
That was you and me and Amy was out.
Item on there, which was under correspondence. There was a government survey that was sent in. And I got together with Charlene and looked at it. It was a voluntary thing for them to request or voluntary for us to decide to do it or not. And it covered so much the information that we provide DRA, it was going to take quite hours to accomplish. So we decided it can get the information from the state when they query them. And we neglected to do it. The Department of Revenue, the Veterans Tax Credit, they're working on the wording for the warrant. And I do not have that yet. Got all the other warrants in DRA portal. And got a couple more working with DRA on that. Questions?
I have a question. Should this be? Should this be?
Which one you're looking at? Five?
Yeah. Isn't that part of the closed stuff?
We got the notice from the Sheriff's Department. So I would say no. Septic approvals, new business. Looks rather complete. I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes as presented.
The thirteenth?
For the thirteenth.
Make a motion, move through.
Well, the second approved the motion.
Okay, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's she'll have to print us a new one that doesn't have draft on it to sign.
Okay.
But we've approved them.
Okay.
So that takes care of that. Tuesday, December twenty seventh. And that's the one where I was absent. And we just took care of the we took care of the twenty second last week. Okay, do you have any? I wasn't there, so I can't.
No, I'm waiting on. Move motion to accept.
I'll say second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the December twenty seventh ones are accepted as the January third, our working meeting. See, it's gray dur with a D, not T. That was the only correction I can see. I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Covers January third being approved. See if I can find this stuff here. First thing is from Clayton. I gotta read it from him and some updates. To take care of. That'll be cleaned it. The corner of Hayward Road and Brighton and Fletcher. The way the road has ended up being curved. It looks like it needs to be the tax map needs to be updated. Correct or work done there. And they said, there are a few things the town records should be corrected. Typically do not make any changes to that max that are not presented to me on survey plans or the records provided by the town clerk. While many additions and corrections were made over the last twenty years, much of it is basically the same as what Walter Breckinridge drafted in the sixties and seventies. I did not show the road section as presented on the two thousand nine plan. This was an oversight. You're okay with correct that? I also failed to update acreage on town map fourteen, two thirty nine, from six point zero acres to the five point eight two acres on the subdivision plan there, Dean. These are all things that we typically have Clayton update as to subdivisions and changes in tax maps. And it's just been a couple of years since he's actually done any work. So I would entertain a motion that we have Clayton catch up on the work that needs to be done as far as the town tax.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
What needs to be changed?
It's just the items here, and there's the subdivisions that need to be recorded and stuff.
Right.
Avatar has the proper information.
Right.
So that we can make sure that everything is taxed appropriately.
Good.
So I think getting him on the list to have stuff done will be a good step because we did this a few years ago, and it's up to the time to do it again. Some confusion from Avatar questioned some of the subdivision work. So get that on the
Two seconds, Neville.
Oh, pardon the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So again, would you like to send Clayton a note saying, please update the records as per our discussion? Have and your man of engineering, North Con, they're troubling up business. Our harbor bank, that goes to the treasurer. Okay, this is from South Beach Drive, dealing with a South Beach Drive address. Looks like it's from the town, according to the property owner, has contracted Avatar Associates of New England to verify all information on the assessment record cards. A portion of properties are selected annually for this process. Your property has been selected. This ongoing process will begin this winter, will continue throughout twenty twenty three. A representative from Avatar wearing a picture ID and driving a vehicle that is clearly marked municipal assessor will visit your property requesting information about your property. Will measure the exterior of her home and all structures located on the property and ask the interior at the time. The purpose of the interior inspection is to note physical attributes such as number of bedrooms and bathrooms. If Avatar is unable to inspect your home, they must estimate the required information until an interior inspector. A notice to schedule an interior inspection will be mailed to you. If you are not home at the time of the visit, a door hanger will be left to notify you of the visit. Although you should see only see the assessor once in five in the five year data verification process, keep in mind if your property is under construction or you have otherwise altered your property, you may see the assessor more frequently. Also, this process is intended to correct physical data errors. This means your value should only change if there was an error or omission on your assessment record. We realize that participating in this process may be an inconvenience to you. We will do everything possible to make the process as easy and unobtrusive as possible. If you do not want a representative from Avatar to visit your property, you should email the town at town clerks, et cetera, or send written letters to the town assessor's office within next fifteen, let them know your decision to opt out of this process. If you choose to opt out, you will still receive a follow up letter requesting you schedule an interior inspection. Avatar will have to estimate data from the road in these instances. If the town does not hear from you, we will assume you have granted permission for us to continue with our jobs outlined above. This is a copy of a letter that came to the town property. So this is the same type of letter that goes to approximately one fifth of the town residents this year. This is just for that Moon Lake property there. There's nothing special about it.
When do we officially get rid of that?
We I still have not heard back from Neville Zar, so I need to contact the lawyer and see if we can cancel that sale and consider
redo it.
Get it up for bid again.
Cool.
I don't think the microphones are working. You want to test my tone?
Test.
Okay. Please call me if we're not having that work. Couple of bills that came in, go in the folder. We'll hold off on. Letter from DES. A subject is the assessment of roadway embankment and culvert at Kruger South Wildlife Management Area. I'm just going to read the whole thing. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Dam Bureau is responsible for ensuring the safety of dams in New Hampshire through its dam safety program. On December first, twenty twenty two, NHDES dam safety engineers visited the site with representatives of the Hampshire Fish and Game Department. Dam Safety previously visited the site on February twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, the Hampshire Fisher game obtaining the property. The site includes an earthen roadway embankment approximately two hundred and thirty feet long, eight feet tall, three twelve inch diameter platters within the top of the embankment. A bridge opening culvert approximately six feet wide by four feet tall is located approximately one hundred feet from the left abutment. It appears that it was constructed over the existing stream, and the elevation of the stream bed through the culvert is natural. The bridge deck has been removed prior to state visit. Beaver debris on the upstream side of the bridge compromised discharge capacity through the bridge, creating an impound upstream of the embankment. No human constructed structure designated to artificially impound water, stop block bay, concrete, beer, et cetera, was observed in beaver debris. The embankment adjacent to the right bridge abutment has breached sometime since the twenty eighteen visit, and it was clogged beaver debris. A second breach clogged beaver debris was on the left end of the embankment, also due since twenty eighteen visit. Although the embankment is estimated to be approximately eight feet high in places, the bottom of the bridge culvert appeared to be the natural stream grid, stream bed. In accordance with RSA four eighty two colon two, Roman number two A, a roadway culvert shall not be construed considered a dam if its end vert is at the natural bed of the water course. It has adequate discharge capacity to disperse water under normal circumstances. Pursuant to environmental water of something three oh one zero three, a roadway embankment whose culvert is set at the natural stream bed shall be considered a dam if during the twenty five year storm, water surface, the elevation of culvert six feet or more above the water surface elevation at the culvert out and has impounded two acre feet or more water over the crown or top of it. To assess discharge capacity of the bridge culvert, DES developed a rainfall runoff computer model of the watershed upstream of the embankment and created a stage discharge relationship of the bridge culvert using hydro cap. Model parameters included twenty five year storm, twenty four hour rainfall, precipitation, and watershed area characteristics were obtained from the USGS, USDA, and NOAA websites. The bridge culvert was modeled using measurements obtained by DES, but modeled without the presence of the beaver debris. The model indicates that the water surface elevation at the bridge culvert inlet during the twenty five year storm is less than six feet above water surface and elevation of the culvert outlet and no waters being impounded above the top of the bridge culvert inlet. Therefore, the embankment and bridge culvert is not a jurisdictional dam in accordance with the RSA. Accumulation beaver debris in the bridge culvert caused the embankment function as a dam, and the observed breaches are evidence of floodwater overtopping the embankment. To avoid continuing instances of overtopping and the formation of wider or additional areas, measures should be taken in beaver dams to allow natural stream flow. Build up of beaver debris should be monitored and maintained to ensure the impoundment levels do not compromise the structure. Removal of beaver debris should be completed in manner consistent with RSA two ten colon nine, environmental writing three oh eight point zero one G. Please note, if the beaver debrees cannot be removed in accordance with the aforementioned RSN illustrative rules further permitting may be required by the DES Wetlands Bureau. DES understands that fishing game wants to permanently remove the bridge crossing and modify the embankment to reduce the potential for impoundment formation and embankment overtopping. Modifications with the bridge and embankment may require approval from DES Wetlands Bureau. Modifications which impound water might be definition of a dam as outlined in RSA forty two two, and planning should be considered coordinated with DES Dam Bureau. It looks like the DES and fishing game are going back and forth on this, and they're just keeping us appraised at the situation. So hopefully, there won't be any issues from water coming down from that well life management area. To the select board, the postmaster contacted me today to let me know that someone was trying to get an address at 4 Sand Hill Road. From what I can gather, the man that owns the property supposedly lives in one apartment and built another below him where another family or individual lives. Now there is another apartment that is being claimed. I do not remember any building permit coming through for this property. You would have documentation for it. Post office wants to confirm that the apartment is legal and they can issue an address. This was from Christie.
That needs to be checked out.
It looks like we'll have to check that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Where's Sand Hill Road?
Other side over by Ruger. When you turn, when you turn to come, like you're coming in front of Ruger and you turn to come up Ridge Mill, don't go around the pond straight.
Okay, so that's something we're going to have to look into. Another thing from Christie. This form needs to be signed for Boone Laker who was taxed improperly and will be working with the assessor hopes of it not being a continued issue this year, so.
There's a lot of issues.
It was from Leah and Joanne Miller. We taxed even though they were registered on time. So. There's another form on the time. Thank you. I hate the turn of the year. I'm always forgetting things.
Join the club.
And I see the copy of the letter to the property owner regarding the culvert up on Hayward Road. Has that been sent out?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all.
And I gave a copy to Mr. Kuchet for one.
So that's just our copy for file.
Right.
Okay, get this back to Christie. And it looks like we have a petition for a warrant article. Looks like Christie has double-checked the names. And here's the warrant article. To see if the town raise and appropriate the sum of $80,000 to contract part-time police services for the town of Freud. The select court and town moderator shall appoint a volunteer five-person safety board to execute this task. Two people by the select court and three by the moderator. If the safety board is not able to contract services for 2023, this monthly is the earmark for use of police services in 2024. And as it is a petition article, the select court has no choice. We need to put it on the warrants, the only corrections. So I'll take that and add it to the DRA site. Yes, Ed, would you step up to the microphone so that we could hear?
It's like we're trying to know if you want me to do that or not.
Yeah.
I actually have another petition for a warrant article.
Oh, well.
It hasn't been double-checked by Christie, but also resubmit it now.
Certainly.
52 signatures sent.
Yeah, I will give it to Christie to double-check, but I'll read it off right now. Shall the town public meetings, the town of Freud, to take in effect, build public to re-institute it into the town budget in future years. Purpose of it. It also serves as a warrant article. It will have to get enter number of signatures. I'll take care of adding it to the warrants. Thank you.
Russ.
I see something on our agenda. Yes, Ed?
I did turn in the originals to you as a possible committee to copy that before they leave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Melissa, could you explain the warrant article number one that you have listed underneath your agenda item?
AI, those were at my request.
What's that?
Are you talking about this?
All boards need to be elected versus.
Those were my suggestions I called.
So you're suggesting that all.
I would like to discuss that we, if we should take all the boards elected positions instead of appointed positions. Because, you know, people seem to think they need an input in it and that would be the only way they would legitimately have.
Are there any RSA's prohibiting that?
No, elected or appointed.
Okay.
And it's up to us to choose. Well, it's up to the town to choose.
Up to the town to choose.
Right, we can put it in a warrant article and they can choose.
Any comments, Amy? I do want to check in the Hampshire Municipal to make sure that that's acceptable before we write it up.
Right.
But I see nothing wrong with that. And the second one, increase the select board from three to five members.
And I know it would be an increase in the money, however, or want to be in the forum. It would spread out the, you know, it would spread out, give more people a chance to be involved. There'd be more people on top, less idea of things. Be a wider range of individuals up here. I mean, if there's that many people willing to actually step up now, let's do it.
Yeah. As it happened, I queried the municipal association about that. And if a town votes to enlarge or decrease its board of select, the change does not take in effect in either case until the first annual meeting following the meeting at which the question was acted upon. So if we voted this year, or if it gets voted this year, would not take effect until next year, May 24.
Shame on the other one.
And.
Shame on the elected one.
It just covers the fact that two members for a three-year term, one member for a one-year term, spreading it out, which makes sense. So I'll include this as another warrant item on the warrant. Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up. In the process of looking at paying for the cash street repaving, I contacted Sugar River, which has been our bank of choice a couple of times because of their rates are better than other ones. And one thing that came up a little bit different. In the past, when we've requested a loan, the first payment is usually scheduled for July of the same year that we initiated the loan. And there's two ways that can be done. You can either go for just one-tenth of the loan payment, you know, the total loan, so that you got 10 totally equal payments. Or you can do as we have done in the past. The first payment is simply the payment for the monies from the time the loan is taken out until that first payment, which is usually a short cycle, so it's a significantly smaller amount. And not having any past history, I figured we'd ask. Now, in the past, we've done it with the short cycle with a small payment. Any discussion? Well, basically you boil it down to this. If you have the standard way we've been doing it, your first payment is a very small one. The rest of the payments are all judged by how long the payment period is between the payment from one year to the next. So it varies a little bit each year. This way, all 10 payments would be absolutely the same. In this case, it'd be $54,051.42. I can write it up either way. The bank is amenable and I hope Sean would ask the board to see which way is more to go. Any ideas? I think I'll also ask Charlene because she's got the most history.
The 10 even would be easier, the little one would be, you're still going to pay the money eventually, so.
Yeah, this is, you know, and this is only if we choose to go with the bank loan this way. It just makes a difference on how the warrant article will be written up. And I'll add that to the warrant pile. That brings us up to positions on planning and zoning boards. And as it happens, I have, first of all, from Dominic Camagio, a offer of becoming a member of the zoning board. He's been on planning board in the past, but he's not interested in that. He's offering to be put on the zoning board. I also received, where is it? A letter from Chris Prost from earlier this month, writing to request appointment to the planning boards. My understanding, the board cannot currently meet quorum to hold meetings and conduct business and I'd like to remiss you and support our town and its residents. And further information there, so.
Awesome. Kim was wanting to discuss that one, so you might keep it out. Kim Cameron wants to discuss this one later, so keep that one out.
Well, I was going to keep all this out because I think it's a good point for discussion right now because we have some confusion as if one member is actually resigned or not, Phil, because I have not seen a letter of resignation. We have some people that are out of town, so that reduces the number of people that are able to attend and create a quorum on the planning board. And we've got a couple of other people that have expressed interest in supporting the town by being on the boards. So, Kim, you've had contact because you're working as, I believe, the temporary chair at this point.
I was drafted. Do you want me to give the microphone?
Could you please give the microphone so that everybody can hear?
If anybody doesn't help me, I'm kidding. I was drafted to become the interim chair of the planning board. We currently do not have a quorum. One of our longtime members is on extended vacation. I actually will be speaking to our other member who we do not have a letter of resignation from tomorrow. We have our letter of intent for someone who's very interested and we do have several other people who are interested in coming forward and supporting the town by becoming members of the planning board. We have another member of our board who has been a wonderful, long-term member of our board, but has not attended the meeting lately. My suggestion to the select board would be to appoint our long-term member as an alternate. We don't want to lose him. We don't want to lose all of that historic knowledge. And this would allow him to attend at his own time and on his own terms. And then we could appoint Chris as a member. He's said that he would definitely be giving us a commitment for a year and we would be able to have the other people come in at our first meeting in February and come in, speak to the board, give us, you know, in their words, why they are expressing their intent to come forward. Give us a letter. And then by that time I can speak to our other member, Phil, and see what he is going to be voting. I hope that if the truth comes on, that I can maybe talk to him and see if he will become alternate. And because the alternates can come and work on working meetings and he again has a long time of the community on the board and has a long time to lose. So that's my recommendation and I would ask that you appoint Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
That sounds like a good plan to make.
Make a motion to do that.
Is Chris Prost here tonight?
I'm pretty sure he's on his school day.
Oh. I think, Ben, I don't have phone number from him, but I do have an email address so I can get in touch with him and get that taken care of and get him to come in and take care of signing an oath of promise. If you're amenable both to signing that, we can take care of that. Do we know how long a term we want to have him start?
He said in the letter, or he said to her a year.
Okay. No, no, I'm just getting clarification.
P E R M A N T.
So that is appointed. Term would expire 1/10/24. Make sure I add the right years together.
Speaking of which, can you update this?
Yes.
No, this is a clear form. You don't know who you're. Fill it out.
Because I caught him on the other one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank her. I did the same thing.
Okay.
That's a question.
And I will get in contact with Lilits. And you were going to get in contact with Larry Rawls when he gets back?
I'll call him.
Okay.
I will let him know, but it's difficulties on a particular time zone and he's out.
So this may hang on for a little while. That's understanding. But at least we're making progress on filling the positions so that the board can actually function. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Hope.
Thank you. Hope David, for everybody who's listening. I just wanted to clarify, it seems like usually on boards there's certain terms for positions. So I am fully in support of Chris going to 2020. We consider the town very well and very fairly. I'm just trying to clarify on planning board as the present they exist, are there not particular terms that?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, every three years, every three years we get redone. But since you offered for a year and it's a matter of getting a quorum filled, we're going to accept it.
Okay.
I didn't think I could say it out loud.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. And I think one of the things we also need to accomplish is to get the current list together with their current expiration dates, some of that we can get from looking at the appointment forms. So we know, at least at this point, who's planning on being there for what length of time? And then. for what length of time, and then when we need to. Yes, Brenda?
Can you put that in the town report also? When the select board members' terms are up and planning?
I thought it was in there.
Because last year it wasn't there.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing. Let me add a note to go along with my stuff for the warrant.
Russell, you sent this to me on the website.
I can't hear you very well.
If you send it to me, I'll put it on the website as well, so that all board members have their terms and limits on the website.
Okay.
Get that updated. Because I, yes.
Well, it looks similar, but it's not there.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I keep my notes and don't lose stuff because with working on the town DRA warrants and town report and collecting the stuff together, it's easy to get things confused. Now, we also had a letter from Dominic DiMaggio.
Right. Dominic, there was a comment about, Brenda, did you want to go to the planning board?
No.
No, okay. Well, we need, no, no, I meant, I meant you. Because, okay, you have to talk to Jasper because we definitely need, I'm not sure how the board is as far as members, but we need alternates. Well, Jasper's the one that appoints the zoning board. We don't do anything with that. I mean, we signed to give him more signatures, but the moderator chooses the zoning board. Because remember at the first meeting, we, he commented on that, be appointed everybody.
So the zoning board's pretty well straight at this point?
Well, they need alternates, and I believe there's still one more alternate. Do you have all the members?
We're one short.
One short, okay, then he could be a regular member and we still need two alternates then.
So on the same topic of planning board, zoning board, Kristi had volunteered to be a planning board.
Well, with her recent letter, I don't, I mean, you can give it to Kim, but I think with her recent letter and the situation coming up, I don't think she's gonna have a.
No, she said she'd be okay being on the planning board.
She would.
Yeah, after she's done the march.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have to see about.
She can talk to Kim.
What length of term would she be set up under? Would we want to do a two-year term so it doesn't expire at the same time as Chris?
So, to Hope's comment, as referring people in, I would prefer people come in staggered term limits so that we don't have everybody all of a sudden their terms expire at the same time, and then we're just, they're out of the board. So if Kristi brought up a letter, then as I told the other applicants that have discussed interest, I'd like everybody to come in, since we're gonna have a quorum to the next school planning board meeting, which is the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
And then you come in and speak to the board, bring in their letters of intent. You will have some business to attend to, but come on in and talk to us and let us know what's going on, so.
So would you like us to hold off on Kristi until that time? Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Yep, because we have a quorum, that's all we needed.
She should come in as an applicant, just as everyone else.
You have mine.
I just got a blank one.
No, that's okay.
If we need to, if we need to, if you sign back up.
Okay, technically I'm not, but.
No, I just printed off a number of them just in case we had two of those. Okay. Is there anything else on the planning meeting at this point? I think we gotta wait till your next meeting before we can see anything more happen.
Right, but we have our quorum, so we can have a next meeting.
Right, so I think we're making good progress.
First Wednesday.
Under old business, we have the school speed signs, and I have the information from TACCO as to the cost.
Part of that is the portable for moving from here to there and the battery pack. Part of it isn't for the school zone, I need to separate them.
Okay, so you'd like to get clarification from them?
Well, yeah, I'll separate them on this cost and stuff because the one is, the one unit is a, a.
Self-contained?
Self-contained, we can take it and put it on part, and we can put it up on cash, put it on the turnpike.
Okay.
And it cabled to a tree or whatever, and it's got the same things, got the feedback, little lights, all that, however. So I'll separate that and get that back to you. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with a gentleman from DOT, and we're meeting at the school, and then we're gonna go to the two places. Distance for the school zone signs is pretty much up to us and contains wherever we have usage. So we can put the one on the greenhouse property, so we won't have to purchase any.
Yep.
And the fire department has donated a square down in front of the fire department for the other side. So we're gonna meet tomorrow with him, run the GPS. These are the excavation permits for DOT for both sides. We need to fill them out and then make copies for our file where it says contractor will fill it up for the municipality since Joe's doing the actual work to install and everything. Regulations, what he has to follow, and everything is here. We meet tomorrow, I'll have the maintenance agreement from Concorde, send that, these to District Two, and it's good to go.
So you want to keep all that together for now?
Well, these we can keep in a file because I'll get, they'll get copies stained on if they sit at my house, and if I go on my desk, my desk is where people put it. This one I'll keep, I'll get back to you, I'll go through it.
Let me give this to Melissa to create a folder for, we'll start fresh so we don't lose.
Two pages to each one.
Yep. Okay, so that looks pretty good. The last item I have under old business on the agenda is the overton water issue coming across the road. Is that still an issue?
It seems to be, it had done away for a while. I don't know if it's just pumping at night, but when the snow came down and the ice was thick on Cash Street, you could see where running water cut a slice right down the driveway from drain tube and right across the road, like that deep in the ice. There's still some moisture over there. I don't know if they're just pumping it or something else. I had approached them at one point, and they said they had gotten somebody to fix it. I discussed with Joe, and he said the same thing that I have. He said the same thing about it coming, looking like it comes.
Joe is still across the road.
Correct.
Okay, so.
We need to send.
Need to create a letter saying this is not an acceptable process, and.
Well, especially with, if they approve the new road, we definitely can have that next year.
Right, we don't want to be damaging a nice new road.
No, absolutely not.
So, okay. I will work at crafting up something on that.
Hannah with dispatch.
You have something from them or just information?
Well, information. We had 1250.
1250?
That was what they're adding to all their districts.
Okay, we can say 1250, 12,000.
Yes, last year plus 1,250.
Okay, 1,250, thank you, just double checking.
Did they give you a time on when anything was gonna be turned on up here in town?
Can you be patient with the Joe and take that?
I'm sorry.
The new tower building is leaving its location on site the 14th of this month.
I saw something that on a news feed, it was, but it's coming from Colorado or someplace. Somebody's picking it up on a flatbed and bringing it back.
Shouldn't go anywhere by Thursday.
Wow.
That's gonna make.
There's Chris.
Because I saw that there had, there was dirt, road tracks in and out of that area and sand and stuff, so they're obviously prepping the face of the tower. So I think we're in good shape there. Chris Prost?
Yes.
Ah, perfect. You missed the discussion, but you're very happy to have you join the planning board. So what we can do is, as soon as the meeting's finished, I'll have you to sign that paper. Go from there. Okay. Now, was there anything else? I knew we'd asked about that, but I didn't know we had an update here. But that sounds good, and tower work is coming along. Because that's something I wanted to include in the select board report that goes in the town report, that's, you know, we voted the money last year for what's the status of it, see what's going on. For you, latest, I think that's the year-end report from Casella as to what we've gotten from what we've been charged for the shipping and everything.
Should be cheaper.
The tabs, and it looks like we've stayed pretty much within budget as we expected.
We did well, I think, going to the glass and doing it once a year, shape is considerable.
And some of the other things that were in the box are a septic design. There's the sheet that goes with it, and then we have two buildings from this as well. I'll go grab the stamp.
So you're building my garage. You're building my garage. That would be perfect, 60 by 80.
This thing is, looks like it's getting pretty old. Can you sign on it?
Yeah, we actually signed without one the last time, we just signed in the little
And then I'll let you start with the building permits. That for the treasurer. Not, not for trustees. It's always a question when it comes to one of the banks, is it go to the trustee or is it go to the treasurer?
You have nothing to do with 106 Croydon Book, right? Why is this one, this was clipped to his stuff?
Well, according to the stuff, the map of lot says map 15, lot 461.
No, 46 dot one.
That was 15680.
I don't know, I can't read this, where do I sign?
We'll see.
And he has one of the stamps.
Because he has an actual, that has an actual reading.
So.
Yeah, because that's not his, that's not the property. This was just a brand-new subdivision that he did between Pinnacle and Warren.
So there's an incorrect map of lot?
So I think it's a bad map.
Well, see.
461, and it's 46.1.
Right, see, it's lot 46 on the tax map, but that's without the, before the subdivision. And it hasn't been recorded with the new number yet, so it shouldn't.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, yeah, this is one of the subdivision changes he has to make in the book.
So we don't have anything we can refer to as far as a property card at this point?
I don't know that it's been made yet.
Oh, okay.
Don't know that it's been made yet. Yeah, because see, the first one is 680 and the other one's 46.
So we need Clayton to get the subdivision done first.
Right.
And.
I mean, we can go ahead and do it because we know what it is, and it's being done, and it's approved, but you filed these with the clerk, right? Those are filed with the clerk, and we can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
He needs to get that updating done.
Yeah, I knew there was some that I had this discussion with Clayton on, and what I've So 461 is just trash.
Right.
All right. Think that accomplishes everything that's on the actual agenda, so do you have anything to mention? Do you have anything? So now I'll open it up to the floor if there's anything that they have questions. Yes?
On the town report, the town budget.
Yes.
Article two, first lines of debt services.
Yes.
Is there any way that we can put on the town report right down above the total?
Yeah, I guess so, because it's the two properties, the Moore's House, yeah, and then the other one's Loverland Hill paving at this point. The reason it's listed that way as debt service, that's the way the DRA has it in their fields that we have. Anything else? Yes?
I mentioned you were talking about the signs today, you were also mentioning the mobile one, is that, is that something separate?
The mobile one is something we can take around, it's battery-operated.
Right.
And the, the other two are gonna be, one down by the fire department on a post, and then one up there on a post, and those are gonna be the same, they're gonna be driver feedback, and they're actually gonna have LED around during school hours that lights it up.
Right, I know, you mentioned those two. Going to happen in the weather or is that something separate that's still being figured out?
Well, it was a matter of getting the prices to see what we're gonna do and stuff, and then we can, you know, work from there and take votes or whatever we're doing on it. Biggest part is getting this, it's been three months trying to get the state, and I finally got them out, I got the two copies of the permits, and everything's falling together. Heck, for me to call Brooke and say, can we have a piece of land? And he said, yeah. I mean, that was five minutes. I mean, that was five minutes. The state is three months.
If there's nothing else, I'll.
One other. Is there any more discussion between you guys or you and other guys trying to figure out whether meetings cannot fall on state nights somehow?
I didn't hear you very well. I'm sorry.
About them rescheduling. I just found out tonight they had another meeting at the school at the same time. That's, that's why.
Well, select board, yeah. Select board meetings have been posted and listed as the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month for number of years.
Right.
So if school board goes ahead and puts something else on, we're not gonna change ours because.
Thank you.
I don't know if we can require them, but request. I think the other thing we, I want to do is I want to work with our website and get that calendar updated so it shows all the different meetings on it. So that's one consistent site to go to and get them used to the idea of putting the, getting the information to us to put out there as well.
Or something that could be misplaced to, you know, to somehow make sure that they that's got the same forever. So is there even some, somehow a way they can not be scheduled on the same time or something, really something that could be, you know, written on and put in place to require them?
We're gonna have to discuss it with them because, you know, even though we've asked in the past to try to work closer with the school board, we rarely hear much from them until all of a sudden, okay, either they've got their stuff ready for the town report or they don't have it ready. That's about it.
Right, I know it's been brought up on that end as well and that's the only time we can do it so. Something other than that response.
Yeah. So we just need to start working on it, trying to get it a better, better communication. Did you have something else?
What's the update on the town website? Is that official yet?
The town website has changed to the new provider and it is up and running. And it is, you know, we still need to start editing and adding more stuff, you know. And at this point, I've been working on it. I've looked about it and Kim Burkheimer is another one that's working on it. The next step is to also get our administrative assistant the permissions to get in there and add agendas eighteen minutes and stuff. So, and then get to the training too. I've been under the weather, so I've not sitting there trying to learn how to quit much this past couple of weeks. So it's, it's been holding up. But the site itself is much better. It's run by the same provider as Grant, I believe, Grantum and a number of others. So it's a very responsive site. So if we have issues, in fact, I had issue when I first tried to sign in. I emailed and I had it answered within two hours. So it's the type of thing that we'll have a much better site as we develop it.
Do we have a site address?
It's croydon-nehampton.com.
It's dot com?
So about that.
Yes.
The state should have a domain that's dot com. You guys, I don't know if that's just that you guys prefer. But it just sounds like you guys probably set up the domain things on your end and then have.
I'm sorry, I'm having a terrible time hearing you.
I'm sorry. So it probably just looks like you guys had your own domain at one point and you connected it to that, which was the dot com, the dot com.
We created that when we first started.
And then since you guys have Uber up to Pacific Plus, which is, that's the.
They're just, that's the hosting.
So you should be able to get your dot com from the state. I don't know how
You don't get it from the state. You get it from an ISP provider.
You don't get any dot com.
You don't have to have a dot com.
I know you don't have to. It just runs a lot of credibility too. Because obviously my search query and I'm from that, like you said, there's not a lot on there right now.
Yeah.
So we look at it, dot com. I'm like, I don't even know if this is a real website or if it's for.
We'll have to look into it to see because when we first set it up, it was set up as a dot com.
Yeah, and I was just saying that if you have, yeah, okay, your dot com, you can do that. And you can even rather dot com to.
Okay, well, we'll have to look at it. Yes.
Mr. Jay, just summarize the open offices and the dates for signup for the election.
As I understand at this point, the open offices will be to select work because Amy is filling in as an appointed position to fill the position Ian Underwood had. I am not running for reelection. That puts another position. No.
We tried, but he has someone at home that leads more weight than we do. And she shoots better than he does.
As I found out today, we are going to need to elect a new town clerk as well. I think we've addressed the issue with the planning board at this point and we'll have to assess whether we're gonna start pushing for them to be elected for appointed positions. That may wait till next year.
It's just something to think about.
I believe there is one position on the supervisors of the checklist.
Joe may rerun, but.
She filled in for.
She filled in. She may run again. So if somebody's interested.
So until the opening for applying for positions sets, that's the only ones I'm aware of at this point.
And when the dates was on?
Starts the 25th, correct?
I'd have to check the calendar, but I think it's the 25th is when that opens for applications.
Cut off on February 3rd. February 3rd is the cutoff date.
Okay, and then 3rd is the cutoff.
And Christie will be in the on the 3rd of August.
Yep. Well, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for attending this evening. Chris, I was very. I worked with a number of. Even though I wasn't Navy, I was an associate of the military because I was retired. I understand the value of. So.